This question goes first to Marcy Gregg. Beyond North Point, what is the city's best strategy to bring more industrial users of electricity to help hold down rates, depends power and light rates for residents and smaller businesses, or does North Point substantially solve that problem?
Okay, all right, now I got blue numbers. All right. You know, the study that came out that discussed how much industrial growth, how many commercial businesses and so on, we would need, or residents, in order to really effectively lower rates, electrical rates on citizens, projected that we needed, you know, an enormous amount of businesses, it was something like, you know, 11 at least, large industrial users. North Point projects to bring that to us, but understand that that will develop out over 10 years. And I don't know if you and I, the customers at the residential level, want to wait 10 years to see if that's significantly going to lower our rates. So do we need to be trying to attract other industrial users? Yes, and perhaps the best and easiest use or space to look at would be the old Alice Chalmers site, but as Bridget pointed out, that's a brownfield area and it's going to need a lot of cleanup. We've looked at it before for other projects. And it almost becomes, you know, well, it certainly does become really cost prohibitive to build there without some significant subsidies. And as soon as we start talking about subsidies, our citizens' ears perk up and wonder whether or not this would be a good benefit for the community. Do we offer things like tax increment financing, or tax abatements and so on? How do we access other revenue sources to redevelop that? So I think that's the next area we need to look at, where we could place industrial development, hopefully to offset those costs, but in the end, I'm not sure if even that will be enough.
Yes, I champion 6% rate reduction for the citizens of the city. When I first got into office, like I said, I worked at Power and Light for 34 years. North Point will definitely have an impact on the electrical system. Biggest problem is how we're going to get the power in here. We, as far as development out there, we had plenty of opportunity to get Lake City within us. They're within the city of Independence. Went after them a few years ago. The city just didn't bite and go after it. That would have solved a lot of our problems. A lot of people don't understand, the reason why we have high energy costs is because we spike. What we're looking for is a straight line of use. And at night, when you go to bed, it drops and they can't lower the units that way, so the price of electricity goes up. A lot of our problems down there is we've got shut down the mothball, the equipment down there, so we're just buying power now, but a lot of it's due to mismanagement down there, a lot of overspending. The city manager put a letter out the other day that said that it wasn't fair to the citizens of the city, the way it's been run. So definitely need to look into some management deals, but there's $67 million in reserves, the charter says. Once again, we have a charter violation here. It's supposed to go for rate reduction, $67 million. There's $25 million in there to start with and they never spent a dime of it. Now we're $67 million.
Bridget McCandless.
Independence Power and Light is a municipal utility, so if you look around us, most of those are privately owned utilities that report to the state Public Service Commission. We're unique in that we run our own utility. That works when you have a great balance, and if you look at some of the cities around us, like Springfield, Columbia, they have a really nice balance of residential and commercial. We really have high residential and very low commercial utilization. Some of our biggest users are in the cave systems. They do all kinds of work down in there that you've probably never heard of, but they're one of our big users of electricity. We are actually below the targeted reserves recommended by our financial advisors, and we have been slowly eating away at those financial reserves for Independence Power and Light. Our cost structure is really high. Our electricity is about 15% higher than Kansas City through the company called Evergy. We've had some real opportunities to think about what a modern city looks like with rates that are lower, but with our current structure, I'm not sure how you get there. I do think North Point fulfills about half of the industrial need that we have to level off the costs, but it's not enough to equalize us with Evergy, or Springfield, or Columbia. We've also got big future questions, and I am now out of time.
Good, and that question now goes to you, Butch Nesbit.
Okay, the way I see it, North Point will fill some of the electrical needs, but the problem is, it's come from the past councils that we've had. I mean, why did we not keep up Power and Light? I mean, we should have, 20 or 30 years ago, fixed Power and Light up to standards, and we just let it kept going and going on and going on, so it finally fell apart. Electricity is going to be like gold. Everybody's going to have electric cars, right? And so we got to have a power plant that will help produce power for all these electric cars that everybody's going to. Everybody wants to go to this green, so we're going to have to have a power company. We need one, and we're going to have to build one. We put it off too long. I mean, since we put it off, the price of it keeps going up and up and up. Nothing's going to go down. We just need to get, bite the bullet and go build us a new power plant and get it up and running if we're going to keep doing our own power. Other words, if we go out and source power, it's going to cost us. I don't care what they say, it's going to cost us, our rates are going to go up. So my opinion is, is that we need to fix Power and Light, and we also need to update it to the newer standards. I don't know how it's going to be done, but I'm sure there's people out there smart enough than me to figure out how to do this, but I mean, we always hire these consultants to do this stuff, so maybe we ought to get a consultant firm to figure this out, but I'm sure it's already been done, because we seem to hire a lot of consultants here in the city. So let's just work on doing that. That's what I see we need to do.
All right, thank you. This next question kicks off first with Mike Huff. This is the question, it is one submitted to the chamber. Homelessness is becoming a bigger issue in Independence. What would be your approach to dealing with this growing population in our community?
Well, that's a real tough one. A lot of these homeless people, that's the life they choose. As a council person, I ponied quite a few things up there. One was the shopping cart thing. Another was putting fences around the thrift stores. I was, I'm more interested in what they leave behind and not that they choose to be homeless. I don't like to see the city all trashed out, mattresses laying everywhere. I've seen a mattress sitting down at 23rd and at least some for two weeks now. As far as dealing with them, that population is growing, that's a real tough one to deal with. I think that instead of citizens giving money out the corners, they should be giving it to the churches and let the churches handle that, or some kind of business like that to handle that. Maybe get that into where they can keep everything together instead of scattered all over the city.
Let's go to Butch Nesbit on that. Okay, let's go to Brad. We, we.
When we were wrong, we were right.
Okay, so yeah, so let's get back to being right, because at least one of us can count. Bridget McCandless, questions homelessness.
The issue of the unhoused could be one of the most complicated ones we're going to have to deal with. Every city in the nation is struggling with this. Some are buried under tent cities, and while we see the numbers going up here, we aren't nearly as bad off as cities like San Fran, or San Diego, or Seattle, which I think gives us the perfect opportunity to try to address the unhoused right now, before it becomes so unmanageable that we can't get our arms around it. You know, it has effects on the school district. They have children who are living unhoused, libraries, businesses, parks, so it affects every aspect of the city. We are 10 years behind in the planning that other successful cities have done. Successful cities have shared goals, shared data, and shared outcomes, and they hold themselves to that, and they've done a very nice job in places like Houston. There are models that we can look at, but there is no way Independence can solve this by itself. Kansas City's going to push, Independence pushes back, it doesn't do anything for the people who are unhoused. It's a lot of resources for the city and it doesn't solve the problem. Unless we choose to partner with Kansas City, with Raytown, with Sugar Creek, with the county and the state, we are never going to get this problem solved. I will say that the state has put some restraints in that are going to make solving this problem a lot more difficult, but it means we're going to have to be a lot more creative. Thanks.
Butch Nesbit.
Okay, as to the homeless, everybody sees it. It is in the area, we do need to deal with it. I know the police, acting police chief right now has been out doing some, what do they call, drive-bys and stuff to get the homeless camps out of the area. We're trying to push them out of the area, I know that's what we're trying to do. We have ordinances that say that they're not supposed to panhandle on the major roads, but the problem is, people keep giving them money. I mean, I even heard one time that the mayor even gave one of them a hotel room. I mean, that's not good. So basically, we got to keep quit giving money to them and they will go away, probably, hopefully, but you got to remember, they do have issues that they got to deal with, and we do have some different people come along that can handle the mental issues that these people have. I mean, we are building a new building, I think, to help house the mental people that we come up with in the city, so we are working on aspects of that as of right now, too, also. So my opinion is, we're working on it, but we got to quit giving to them on the corners. We got to quit giving, doing that. And so, and then also, I hear that quick trips are now probably putting in officers to help keep people from handling handlers, come in there and stealing at nighttime from them. Because I heard one times that they just come in, just clean out all their stuff out at nighttime, just walk away, and they don't do anything about it. So I think we just need to get tough on these people and help them out and move them along.
Question's homelessness, and it goes last to Marcy Gregg.
Until about six years ago, the city of Independence was focused on homelessness and beginning to make an impact in this area. I'm going to give credit to a gentleman sitting in the room here, Jim Schultz, who was a former council member, who created the Hungry and Homeless Coalition. That coalition comprised of folks who are representatives of service agencies, the city of Independence, churches in the area, schools, neighboring communities like Kansas City. And Jim's vision, and what we practiced, was that that group met together monthly and had support from staff to extend those communications between themselves, and really begin to talk about how do we, as a community, solve homelessness, or at least make a big dent in it. About six years ago, when I left the council, I was the last council member to shepherd that along. Jim left two years before me, and I took over trying to support that after him. And after that, subsequent councils did not make that a priority. In fact, one council member, who's no longer a council member, said, "Why on earth would you want to worry about the homeless? They're not going to vote for you anyway." That attitude and neglect of a real part of our community has led to where we are now, six years later. On my website, there's an issues page where I identify a starting point strategy, and my first strategy would be to reconstitute the coalition that Mr. Schultz had created. Maybe it needs to look different, I don't know, but we need to start having communications between these agencies again. They're not talking to each other and they're not sharing information, and that's led us to this floundering around and a serious problem that's developed over the last several years. So we start with the coalition, we bring the experts back into the room, we work with best practices of other communities, and then we begin to make a dent in this issue.
This next question will go first to Bridget McCandless. The question is this. US 24 from Sugar Creek East to Nolan Road has improved considerably over the past few years. However, given the historic nature of the square, Inglewood, Truman Home, that area, as large tourism draws, what else do you propose to make Independence a destination?
You know, a city isn't just a collection of houses. It's people, it's stories, it's history, and that creates the character of a city. And that's part of the reason that we all love Independence, we're a character. You've seen some great investments. The Truman Library, if you have not been, I just encourage you to go. That has been such an example of private-public partnership. Truman Library actually raised $55 million for their renovation, and it is beautiful. You need to be able to support that with other attractions to Independence. We have not given the TLC needed to the Vale Mansion, to Bingham Wagner, to the 1859 jail. We have some really neat things in Independence, but they need a little TLC, and they also need boosting, because while we know about them, people from outside don't. I think we actually need a big RV park, or at least one that's more available. As a recently retired person, one of the things that you do is go and visit other communities and see their attractions, and wanted to do that in an RV. It's not really easy places to do that in Independence. I think that's an opportunity we have to be able to encourage people to come here, but those coordinated efforts to be able to talk about what's wonderful in Independence, we haven't done that very well, in part because we haven't been able to fund tourism. So, thank you.
Butch Nesbit.
Well, as to the 24 Highway aspect, I mean, I drove that, I drive that. I mean, the only thing new on there that we see is the Truman Library. The state and city is doing some help going down the road towards 291, but not towards 24 Highway. Yes, our tourism has been falling down. I mean, my mother helped get the Bingham Wagner Estates, also helped with the Vale Mansion. This was some 30 or 40 years ago, and we have just let them go to pot. We haven't kept them up to date, and that's going to be on probably old councils. So basically, we need to get back to our tourism, help boost them up. We need to take our tourism money and fix what's broken out there. I did see that, and I don't know what happened to it, they took $600,000 away from them in a city council meeting a couple, couple weeks ago, and I don't know what happened to it. So I don't know if it's someplace else in the budget, or if it just disappeared, but I mean, that's $600,000 to fix up tourism in Independence, so I don't know what happened to it. But I mean, that's where I stand at, that tourism is a part of Independence, and we need to fix it.
That question goes next to Marcy Gregg.
I was not sure before, we had. Gave me the, it wasn't on camera, sorry. I forgot to hit the, sorry. You're asking me to do too much. So to that point, I think we need to be more focused on tourism. We're not selling this community like we used to be. Perhaps out in some of those trade magazines, a tourist on the other side of the state will find an ad for Independence. I don't know, I'm not out there, but what I do know is that when I do travel, I don't see the kinds of ads that we see about other communities on TV and in the places on social media that I peruse. I'd just like to see us get a solid, dynamic tourism director who recognizes that our history is one of our greatest assets in this community. Without paying attention to that, without funding it adequately, without funding the preservation of those sites and so on, and selling the community as a whole, I think we're missing the boat. In addition to that, you know, we have youth sports events that happen here, we have Mavericks games, we have all of these opportunities. We just lack that coordination. It really comes down to coordination and communication.
So I'm going to ask a follow-on question to that, and it will start with Butch Nesbit. It says it's on, it says it's, can you hear me now?
Mike Huff.
You want to repeat the question again?
I'll give the next one, whatever.
Can we redraw for the?
No, no problem.
The question is, that, the premise of the question is, yeah, 24 looks better from Sugar Creek over to about Nolan, but there's more. We've got Truman, Truman Hall and the Square, et cetera, et cetera. So what should the city do? Well, I've always, I have a real problem with the gateway to this city. There's really no entrance to this city without going through some pretty rough places. You know, you look at the Stone Arch Bridge up there, and thank God, the adult bookstore is going to be tore down, I'm hoping. It's not in our city, but you see this beautiful bridge, and here's an adult bookstore. It's like, wow, you know, you see the temple, and it's really, you know, that's one of our nice places to come through. Hopefully that'll be cleaned up, but I think our biggest problem with our tourism is we don't, we're not getting enough off the gate to pay for these places. I think, last time I heard, it was four or $5 million, and that's pretty tough to come by these days. You know, we tried the branding end of it and stuff like that, just didn't really bring anything here. Of course, we had COVID, didn't help us any also, but the combining of this department kind of bothers me a little bit, too. I think we need a separate tourism department, somebody that's got some really good ideas, hopefully some young person that can really bring some life to our tourism. We've got beautiful sights, Bingham Wagner and the Vale Mansion, I mean, unreal. But I, that's a tough one to bring, to get that money in here, that's for sure. And they are decaying, they're pretty rough.
And I will jump into the follow-on question, and it's going to cover some of the same ground, so maybe you don't need to go 90 seconds, but it's up to you, but let's be, let's drill it down on that a little bit. The city has this long list of deferred maintenance, and it includes a lot of the historic sites, you know, that, which do help drive tourism. It's just a matter of funding. What's the best way to secure that funding over the long term? And that question goes first to Mr. Nesbit.
Okay, to secure the funding over long term, that's, that's going to be a tough one there also to do, because you don't want to raise taxes on anybody, because, I mean, we should be collecting fees when we go through it, and they do. The problem is, is that costs keep going up, and we deferred it too long, and now it costs, costs more. So, I mean, to defer projects, it's just, it shouldn't be that way. We should fix what we, if we're going to advertise it, we should fix it. If we're not, if we're not going to fix it, let's just don't advertise it and just let it go to wayside. But people in the city, they're probably private firms and private money that we could probably get, but we need a tourism person, like Huff said, to maybe go out and get this for us, to help build this back up. I know that's what my mom did when she was here. She went out and got private money to help build all this stuff up, so that's probably what needs to be done.
That question goes next to Marcy Gregg.
I like it the other way better.
We got issues.
I think we need to evaluate the current rate of our tourism sales tax, which is, we also call that a bed tax, see if that is adequately funding our needs, and then we need to get bold and we need to, we need to dedicate a portion of that, a significant portion, that's adequate to maintain these facilities. The folks at the Vale Mansion, the society that supports that, the volunteers that do fundraising, that host the Strawberry Festival and so on, they work their tails off every year to raise enough money just to do basic maintenance, and the building is suffering still. We need to step up as citizens and recognize that these sites, these assets, are the key to the tourism dollars that bring people to our community, that feed our sales tax base, that, that feed our general fund, that paves our streets, that provides our police officers, and so on, so on, so on. And yet, when we survey our citizens, last year's survey was done, and we asked them, you know, rank where are the priorities for these various expenditures in your community, historic sites ranks at the almost bottom of the list. And I think that part of that is a lack of communication about the importance of these aspects, assets, and, and I think it's also just a failure on council's part to step up and say, "These have got to be priorities that we fund." So I think we reevaluate the tax, we see if there needs to be an increase in it, and either way, we get serious about appropriating the appropriate money.
Question goes next to Mike Huff. I won't skip you, you can answer twice.
That's okay. I agree with you, Marcy, but you know, the city's very notorious for kicking a can down the road. They did it with Power and Light, they've done it with the police building, and they're doing with our, our great assets here, the, you know, our Vale Mansion and everything else. They just, they're not spending any money there, it's not, it's a very low priority. I was hoping maybe when they did combine these departments, that maybe they was trying to get some money out of parks to help these, you know, to combine the tourism with them, but I mean, they're really, they're going down here really quick, and they definitely need to be addressed. You know, raising the gate doesn't do a whole lot. You know, it's just a real tough one when you let them go this long, so.
Bridget McCandless.
These aren't easy choices. We're going to be looking at a budget that requires us actually to make some cuts here in the next few years, so coming up with magical dollars out of the budget, I don't know that we can do that. I know communities are really looking at bed tax, how does that, people coming here supports the tourism, but it's kind of a chicken and egg. They don't come to stay in the beds until things are fixed to come to stay in the beds, et cetera. I do know that people come together when they are asked, and certainly, the Truman Library capital campaign showed that. Having people who are dedicated to talking about tourism, talking about the assets we have, working with Truman Heartland Community Foundation, working with our state legislators, saying, you know, "Right now, the state is in a budget surplus. How do we help reinvest in our state?" Because it helps Missouri when Independence does well. I think we have opportunities to do that. We have a whopper coming our way. We are getting the World Cup. So, I don't know about you, but I always tidy up my house a little bit more when I have company coming over, so I am hoping that Independence will really see this opportunity. We have a timeline. We need to get some of these things done, so that while these people are coming to our community, they want to come and see the wonderful things, and that also brings us the dollars that help us sustain that. But I, I think we really have that opportunity, and time is of the essence to make that happen.
Next question will start with Marcy Gregg. The city has struggled financially to maintain the bus service that it has now, even as people who depend on it might say that the community needs substantially more. Would you support better public transit alternatives overall in this community?
I remember the button, absolutely. When I served on the council before, I also chaired our Transportation Policy Committee, so I got to be very familiar with how the KC ATA functioned at that point, and where the KCATA looked to go in the future. Now, for those who don't know, we partner with them for our bus service in Independence, so that folks can obviously board a bus here and take the bus down to work in Kansas City and to other parts of our metro area. Their director had become very creative in thinking out of the box about how to, how to adapt to a changing world and changing needs of transportation. You know, in a day when on your phone you can pull up the app called Uber and take a ride specifically to a location, we should, can certainly, surely rethink how we provide public transportation in Independence. Funding has always been an issue, because it serves a certain population that is needing that transportation, and not, it doesn't serve everyone. And so those who have cars, sometimes multiples of cars, aren't always thoughtful of those who don't have any, and what their needs are. Again, when we survey citizens about what's important in this community, right down there at the bottom with protecting historic assets is public transportation, because the people who tend to be the most vocal are not the same people who need the service. So I think we need to continue to partner with the KCATA, we need to aggressively pursue federal funding when we can and with them, to expand service where we can, to encourage people to ride smarter, and to produce, you know, less, less output of gas and so on for the multiple cars, and just, just in general, expand that service so that not only those who need it the most will use it, but also those who have a choice will choose to use it.
Transit, Mike Huff.
Yes, I'm for expanding it. There's a lot of people in this city that depend on that to get to work, to get to the grocery store, to go to the doctor. We have a lot of elderly that write on it also. I'm a big fan of that. They tried to cut that out of the budget a few years ago. I think part of our problems here, too, is that, you know, we don't have a grant writer in this city. There's one in the police department that does, you know, gets quite a bit, and we just don't pursue that anymore. Years and years ago, we used to have a grant writer, and there's a lot of funds out there that is available, if you have the right person in there to go after that money.
Bridget McCandless, Transit.
I had the privilege of doing a lot of work with the Kansas City ATA and Robbie McInen, who's been their CEO, and he really tried to look at the problem from the eyes of the person using the system, and did some creative and amazing work. Worked with the VA, worked with local clinics, did a lot of work to make the system more functional and more functional and easy to use. We actually got an award from the federal government recently because of the creativity of the ATA in solving those problems. This cannot go away. I took a gentleman to Aldi's the other day. It was 100 degrees out, he was 75 years old, not appropriate for him to be trying to walk to the bus stop. But he talked about needing to go to Aldi's and to Price Chopper and to Walmart to price Rice-A-Roni here and Rice-A-Roni there and Rice-A-Roni at the third place. It is not an option for us not to have public transportation. It is ever more important with the rising price of gas for people to be able to get to work, get to the store, and get to see family. Now, we've got financial issues that are coming up. I put this on the high priority list for myself. Um, I think that the on-demand ride services that are happening in the community have really modified the ability for people to take it from point to point, and they're actually cheaper than running a bus that's empty from point A to point B because that's the way we've always done it. So bringing that creativity to the table is going to be, going to be essential.
Butch Nesbit, the question's about transit.
Yes, we need to have transit. Uh, I see the people get out and line up for the buses daily out there, different locations. But we do have a problem probably for these people getting to the proper locations, because we don't have sidewalks on our thorough streets. I mean, I think we need to get our sidewalks also fixed also, so they can walk to wherever they need to go also. Uh, but the transit, we definitely need. Um, I also, like I say, I, I really haven't dealt with transit that much, but I can see where the different aspects of not having an empty bus, well, I have seen empty buses riding around, but maybe on-demand rides, shares, I mean, that's a good idea to have, and maybe we support, support that also. I also hear that basically we are losing a grant, so the price is going to go up for us from KNC ATA. So we're going to have to be thinking about that. So our price is going to go up, but we're going to have to deal with it, and we're going to have to keep it out there because people do need the transit.
We've got time for one more question before we go to, uh, closing statements, and this is going to go first to Mike Huff. It's kind of a broad, even philosophical question. It's, it's one submitted, uh, by a member of the chamber. Um, how will you, as a city council member, address the need to retain and attract citizens from young families to help Independence grow over the next few years?
Well, I think first and foremost is public safety. Uh, if we don't, if people are not feeling safer, they're not going to come here. And number two is jobs. Definitely need some jobs out here, some good-paying jobs. Um, you know, I'd say that if, uh, you know, people are scared to come out and to live here to, I mean, they're just, they're not, they leave. An, an opportunity also, I mean, we just don't have, um, you know, some real good jobs, and we have very few even restaurants in this town, so, um, you know, I, I really believe that public safety is number one.
Bridgette McCandless.
As I've been out knocking doors, uh, I don't know if you've ever used these apps. When you're out walking doors, it tells you who's a common voter. Uh, I had the privilege of going to doors that weren't on my app just to see who was there, especially when I saw toys in the front yard, because I knew that was going to be a young family. And got to meet all kinds of people who have moved into Independence. We've actually had an increase in our population for the first time in 15 years, and the people coming in are young. The other side of walking doors is there are a lot of people who are in their late 80s and 90s. So over the next 10 years, you're going to have a huge dynamic shift in the people who live here. And we have a real opportunity with our parks, with our good schools, with walkable neighborhoods, to invite and encourage young families to come in. I agree with Butch, you have to have good sidewalks, good curbing, you need that kind of infrastructure investment, because people are out with strollers, people are out walking with their kids, they want to be safe on the road when they're, when they're doing that. There's a dynamic feeling of young families who want to engage and be involved in their city. That just excites me. I think we are going to be seeing a new investment of energy and time and talent by people in this city. What an opportunity. Shame on us if we squander that opportunity. So inviting people to be part of what is wonderful in Independence going forward has to be part of our solution.
Being young families, Butch.
Okay, where I see it, yes, we need to keep bringing in new, young families. Uh, my daughter lives here, they have a kid, they don't even have a sidewalk they can go up and down on. That's why I said, major roads need to have sidewalks. I know a lot of our older houses do not have sidewalks on them, they got big ditches, but they're not traveled that much. So basically, the younger homes, younger people that come there, they do have the kids. I see a lot of that in rental homes. I mean, we have a lot of rental homes here, and I know that our housing or basically the income level is under 35,000 in this city, well, probably about two-thirds or a third of, something like that. So, I mean, we need to bring it up, but we also got to realize that we cannot tax them to death. We got to keep them down there, because, and also in the infrastructure and also in the, um, what do I want to say, the utilities. We can't be raising our utilities, or they're going to move elsewhere. I know my daughter, when they first started, they went out to Lee Summit, and they found out it did cost a lot to live out in Lee Summit. So they did come back to Independence, but I'm glad they did. But like I said, we cannot raise our utilities, or we're going to drive them away. Also, that's where I stand.
Did not see the Spotify coming. I got to tell you that. All right. Uh, you know, we need to, assuming that we're, we can continue, okay, just for the record, that's not my Spotify feed. I know what's in there, I know what my likes are, that's not me. Uh, if, if we can proceed, and I don't see any reason that we can't, Marcy Gregg, the question is to you. No, I'm getting, Laura's telling me no. We're going to have another break, we're going to have another break. Laura, no, Laura has spoken. Uh, this, uh, this group that's running for office has soldered on this evening through various technical difficulties, and they deserve credit for that. And we are at our last question with our last speaker, it's Marcy Gregg, and the que, and then we'll go to closing statements. That question is, you know, how, what are you going to do to retain, you know, young families in this community?
Well, clearly, we need more Spotify in our lives, because I, I felt younger instantly in that moment, you know? But actually, that's not far off my point. We need to be looking forward to the things that are attractive to young families. Why do they want to come to Independence? We need to look at the amenities that they're looking for. And we need to recognize that those aren't the same ones that I was looking for and that my parents were looking for. We need to be flexible, and we need to, we think out of the box. What are they doing? Where are they going for their entertainment? I have several friends who have commented that they, they were going to go take a drive to Lee Summit, to this fantastic water park and spray ground that's new there and a playground. And I've gone and taken a look at some of those and thought, you know, it wasn't too many years ago that our parks were that spiffy, but they're not spiffy anymore. We need to give some more attention to our park system, we need to be looking at the specific kinds of parks and amenities that our families want, and then we need to be open to attracting businesses that meet their needs as well. We, having a brewery on the square has attracted enormous amount of foot traffic and, and created an entertainment district. Let's start thinking out of the box and supporting efforts like that that are attractive to our millennials and our Gen Z's. I have kids in both of those categories, and I want them to, to live here and have their kids raised here and be close to me. So let's be thinking out of the box for that. We have only one inclusive playground in Independence that we've built, that for kids with families and children with disabilities. We need to look at doing another one of those. In fact, I've already been in conversations with Unlimited Play about a possibility to bring some other feature like that to our community. And I'd like to see us bring those assets in for young families.
So we're, thank you for taking all those questions. Uh, we got through about 10 good questions this evening that, uh, I think illuminated a lot of issues in our community and where people stand. We are now at closing statements, the, and those will be two minutes, and the order will be McCandless, Nesbit, Gregg, and Huff. So Bridgette McCandless, you're up, two minutes.
I don't promise that you'll always agree with me when I'm on the city council, but what I do promise is that you will know that I do my homework, that I will seek out other opinions, that I will do what is right for the entire city, and that I'll think long-term. I've knocked more than 1,000 doors in the last several weeks, and people really feel like our city has so much potential. But to actualize that potential, it takes some deliberate work. It takes intentional budgets, it takes neighborhood revitalization, it takes good, solid, trusting government, it takes a city staff who comes and brings their skills and enthusiasm and creativity to their work every day, and it takes residents who feel safe and connected and want to invest in their communities. I will tell you selfishly, I just want my kids to want to come back and live in Independence and raise their families. And to do that, we have to really make some investments and some long-term decisions so that this is a community they want to come back to. I am willing to roll up my sleeves and do the work necessary to do that. I hope you will join me in that, because Independence is worth it.
Butch Nesbit, two minutes.
Well, thanks for inviting me here. Uh, basically, I would like everybody to know that I would work hard for the city, I would listen to the people, I, I would try to put your voice, I mean, I listen to, to council meetings, and I listen to people speak up there. And to my opinion, some of the councils just don't listen to what people are talking about. I mean, there's no rebuttal that I see anywhere. I'd like to have forums out there that basically maybe go to every district once a year to have a forum with the council members, the police chief, the fire chief, municipals, so that we can hear your complaints and also appraise, uh, praises. So that's something I'd like to see happen. Um, I'd also like to see that we get our infrastructure fixed. I mean, we have fire stations are going to have to be fixed, we got a police building that needs to be fixed. I know our city hall needs fixed, but that can wait. That's just, we need to help our first responders first, to get them where they're happy at their place of business, not having things fall down on them and fall apart. Um, also, we need to also work at probably getting better benefits for our employees. I mean, we have the police that needs help, probably help, firemen probably need to have some better benefits. I know we're working on it, but I think we got a city manager who's not talking with our employees like he should be doing. So I, I'm thinking real hard, we have some problems with our hierarchy. Uh, because I sat there and listened at the council meeting the other night, one of the councilmen says, I've been trying to get a meeting with the city manager, and we can't get one. So I think we got a problem there also that we need to deal with, if, in the future here, that something needs to be done about that. So I'm a voice for the people, and so I appreciate your voting for me.
Closing statement from Marcy Gregg.
In my opening statement, I mentioned that I knocked on my 1,000th door Monday night. Now let me emphasize that that's me. That's not somebody from my campaign sticking a flyer on a door, that's me personally. So if you were one of those 1,000 homes, you were handed by me a card with information about my priorities for the city and for the way to, that I would lead, and you were also given in, uh, contact information to have more conversation with me. If you weren't able to answer the door, then you were given that same card, maybe found it tucked away somewhere with a personal note written on it from me. Between now and Election Day, I hope to hit hundreds of more doors and meet many more of you. Right now, this city council does not need divisiveness, it does not need someone who will always side with the majority, it does not need someone who will be learning the ropes for the next year or more. It needs someone who's independent, who will do their homework, who will carry on the same way that Karen served, because we need independent thinkers. We also need people with experience specific to local government. Cities are not businesses, cities are not nonprofit organizations, cities are all about public service, and it's important that the person you hire to fill this job have the skills specific to the needs of this city. If you need to hire someone to repair the crumbling foundation on your home, you don't go out and hire a plumber, no offense to plumbers. But right now, we need someone who is skilled in the foundation of local government and how to make it work better for our citizens. I offer the knowledge and the experience of my previous service and also the lessons that I've learned in hindsight. I've always told my boys that it's imperative, that it's imperative that you learn from your past, from your past choices, what worked and what didn't. I've also told them that if you want a job done right, you hire the right person the first time. Match the skills to the job that you're seeking to fill. I look very much forward to serving the city council again, and I hope that you'll support me and, and vote for me on August 2nd.
Closing statement, Mike Huff.
Yeah, I believe in stating the truth, good or bad, and that the citizens, the citizens of Independence decide on how they want the city to conduct business. We operate, we, we must operate in light of transparency and what is really happening behind the scenes of some city government policies. The city belongs to the working citizens, to the future generations, and many of the, can't get my glasses on, no longer work and still participate in a desire for a safe and good place to live. It is my desire to work towards keeping prom, uh, past promise to our citizens that lie in good faith and by the city charter. The task of being interested in eye-opening, uh, many pressures to conform rather than compromise. But as a strong union membership understands that all bargaining compromise is the key to a better way, better understanding and ensuring all parties agree to conditions which make this a better life for all.
I want to thank the candidates for coming tonight. I want to thank them for holding themselves out for office and knocking on all those doors. So we should acknowledge their participation. We should also thank the Independence Chamber of Commerce. Uh, this is the third, fourth, 10th, I don't know how many, we did several of these this year, and, uh, you know, it's, the special election comes around, and the chamber just saddled up, and here we are. So they really deserve credit for doing that, offering this space and offering, uh, this venue for our time. Yeah. And I also want to make sure we, we thank the citizens who came tonight and the citizens who are watching at home, uh, for being engaged in, uh, what's been a pretty good discussion of all kinds of things in our community. I will remind everyone that Election Day for this primary and lots of other things on the ballot is August 2nd. Polls in our state open at 6 o'clock in the morning, they're open until 7:00 PM. You have no excuse not to vote. Uh, please go vote. Thank you and good night.